Hello, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021 Carrick County Board of Education meeting. I'm excited to have everybody here. We've got a full house. Most people I've seen in here in a long time and excited to see y'all. With that said, we're gonna move into the pledge and invocation with Ms. Katie Statler.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you so much for bringing us here tonight and allowing us to safely meet. Please be with us tonight as we engage in discussions and as we make decisions. Help us all to have open minds and pure intentions in everything we say and do. Thank you for every family represented here tonight and those joining us virtually. In your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, the first thing on our agenda this evening is do I have a motion to consider the meeting agenda?
I move to amend the agenda. To add is item 3.2, receive update from superintendent regarding governor's press conference today.
We've got a motion to amend the agenda. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
All in favor, raise your hand. Perfect. Now, we will make a, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. McClain has made the motion to approve the agenda as amended. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Chadway has seconded it. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. That has passed unanimously. Thank y'all for that vote. We will now move into the public forum. We've got two live public commenters and we were gonna ask Ms. Melissa Oden, Missy Oden, to step up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Before my time starts, I'd just like to first give honor to God for this moment of time to Mr. Chairman, to the board, Dr. Jackson, fellow CDE members, which is Citizens for Diversity and Education, who are watching in YouTube land, and all others who assemble. We greet you in the matchless name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. We begin by asking His blessings upon each of you for your service to our county. We secondly would like to take a moment to pause and give accolades to our tremendous teaching staff and diligent leadership of our administration for helping to lead the way in such unexpected times. Please know that CDE truly appreciates all of your tireless efforts as well. Lastly, to Mr. Probst, we thank you for this opportunity and solicitation of input on the budget, as well as Ms. Tabby for your assistance in trying to get all the information together. At the beginning of time now, I would like to begin by asking the board a very simple question, just by a simple show of hands out of curiosity, how many of you attended the Carrick County Public Schools system? Okay, so out of y'all, now, how many have ever had African-American teachers? That's awesome. So, those now next generation who have children who have attended a Carrick County Public School System that have had African-American children or teachers? And some might even fall into the category of having grandchildren that might have had African-American teachers. The point is that the realistic likelihood is if we continue on the current path that we are on, the show of hands will continue to get fewer and fewer. According to a 2009 report from the Civil Rights Project at UCLA, the United States continues to move backwards towards increase in minority segregation in highly unequal schools. Just imagine for a moment, move backwards in a world that is becoming more and more diverse. For CDE, for, I'm sorry, CDE, it is more than black and white, or Hispanic, or Asian, Native Americans, or any other race for that matter. It is all about equality, due process, and fair opportunities. Then and only then can we, can we, then and only then can glass ceilings be shattered as it relates to promotion and retention among minorities in the school system. Then and only then can there be a shifting of paradigms and way of thinking on those, on those under the surface matters that are known to be barriers that prevent some from moving ahead, becoming, from moving ahead and becoming their best self, or stigmas about our local area that keep other intelligent individuals from even considering our crystal coasts. For CDE, it's about setting level the playgrounds to success, right here in our very own Carrick County Public School System. Did you know that since we've started these conversations five to six years ago, in a district that is made up of roughly 77 white, 77% white, 6% black, 9% Hispanic, 6% two or more races, 1% Asian, and 1% Native Americans, that out of the 4.7 social worker psychologists and counselors per 1,000 students, zero of them are African-Americans? When we first started these conversations, there was at least one. Similarly, zero is also the statistic for supporting roles in the central office. When we started these conversations, there were at least two. For principals and/or assistant principals in positions here in Carrick County School System, there were at least five at separate times. Now, when we look at the composition for those identified, those identified as gifted or talented youth, our students, we have 1% black, 4% Hispanic, 5% two or more races, and 87% white. Some say that these numbers don't mean much in an area that has a diversity rating of .4, or a county that has a population of roughly 70%, 7% African-American. But were we to take, were we to take a strategic pause, we cannot, I'm sorry, were we to take a strategic pause, could we not possibly see any correlation in any of these statistics? Please hear us clearly. A petition for consideration is not about a magic number, nor quota of five, or four, or maybe 15 or more minority teachers or ministry, or administration, administrators, I'm sorry, that would then qualify our school system as being classified as diverse. Nor is it about joining a national narrative that, by the way, has only now catching up to our previous petitions over the last five to seven years dating back to Dr. Linker and other superintendents who followed him. In fact, the quota, in fact, the quota way of thinking is the very thing that we must get away from. For us, it is entirely about the heartbreaking stories surrounding hiring processes that we have recently entertained from current and former schoolteachers and aides, retired principals and counselors, aspiring teachers, those who are constantly told no or to try again later, many of whom are hometown heroes. For us, it is about the children having more heroes that they can relate to, identify with, and aspire to themselves to become more like. It's funny, they say a picture is worth a thousand words, and just so happened in the Sunday's newspaper, that's what the topic is on heroes. Just imagine being a child and not being able to see a face that something somewhat resembles yours. CDE understands that in order to see our way ahead, that we had to reach back to the old wealth of knowledge and experience, and as well as reach out to the new. We understand that diversity also comes, with diversity also comes learning of empathy, flexibility, and how to work with people from different backgrounds and cultures that prepare kids to navigate an increasingly multicultural future. I believe that here in Carrick County, we can defy the national trends by taking on this challenge and helping to lead the way by showing how diversity and qualities, diversity and quality schools can go hand in hand, a monument reached only through equality. CDE is here to prompt each and everyone here to move from our seats of complacency on issues and matters that we know are going on and affecting our minority teachers and students and support staff, which also includes the lack thereof. It is time that we take action. In conclusion, we too understand that this three-phase plan that we've provided to you all will help do just that. It's a beginning to building a bridge to diversity, the creation of an invaluable diverse, invariably diverse learning environment and experience that no dollar can be placed upon. And if y'all have questions, as you'll see, the plan includes three phases or priorities. The first is the short term of improved telecommunication and infrastructure. The second is the interim plan, as we've become aware, the state is working to get diverse, but we don't have to wait on the state. The county can take steps, and these are some of the concepts that we've offered, such as grow your own pipeline, so creating opportunities to fund tuition assistance and such, minority recruiting aids, as well as the training of principals, hiring incentives. And third and final portion of it includes the long-range plan. This would help us to alleviate, keep going into 25-year cycles of addressing the same issues over and over and over. If we go down below the surface and really get an understanding of what is going on, what the barriers are, how we can improve, then we can make it a better place. Thank you for your time, and if you have any other questions, please feel free to reach out to Citizens for Diversity and Education. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Oden.
Thank you very much.
And you would be a great teacher. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the list, we've got Mr. Ryan Eggleston.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Jackson and staff as well. Just two items I'd like to take of your time. I know you have more important things to discuss, especially I know with today's news as it relates to my comments, but I just wanted to share, if I might, two items. The first, just a simple thank you and congratulations to Tabby Nance, and it's been a pleasure to, just in my short time here, get a chance to know her and work with her. She was really instrumental in some of the things that she's been helpful with, so thank you, Tabby, and wish you the best of luck in the next phase. The other item I wanted to just address the board on briefly, and it's hard to believe it's been 12 months already, but some of you may recall, I was here in February, believe it or not, to visit you all on the topic of the AIG program. And I know Mr. Goodwin and Ms. Statler were not in their seats, so just briefly, I wanted to just touch on a few thoughts related to the program and just frankly to end with a brief request to consider from the board. So, let me just bring up my notes, and I'm gonna share again, just for a couple of the new members, just a few thoughts related to the program. As a parent of AIG students in the district and other parents that could not be with us here this evening, come before you at this public comment period to have our statement recognized and included as part of your discussions, and specifically as it relates to this upcoming budget process. We understand that the current budget for AIG funding is approximately in the $450,000 range, all of which comes from North Carolina state funding. In our review of past years, it's our understanding that funding from the state has been relatively flat over a 10-year period, imagine that, and staffing for the AIG program has gone from as high as almost nine teachers to, I believe, roughly about five to five and a half positions district-wide right now. These five and a half positions are required by state law to provide service specifically as outlined under Article 9B of the North Carolina General Statutes of North Carolina for almost 1,000, 1,000 3rd through 12th grade students district-wide. These students are scattered between 17 buildings, that's right, 17 buildings. So, you can imagine with five and a half staff, this is not sustainable for teachers, providing very little value to 1,000 students identified as AIG in our district. Currently, as I know the board is aware, the district identifies its AIG students at the 95th percentile, and we're talking, even at that number, roughly one out of every eight students in the district is in the AIG, identified as AIG. And so, again, why am I here this evening, as I was last year? Without a new revenue stream from the Board of Education to fund AIG at the local level, we believe the long-term viability of this really important program is impermanent. To wait for state or federal funding to enhance the program is simply not a viable solution. Only local funding through the Board of Education will truly make the program what it should be. Without this local funding, our best bet is many of whom will reside in Carrick County for years to come, will not reach their full potential. This is our future at stake. I appreciate your time this evening. I would like to ask just one simple request. Before COVID really derailed all sorts of things in our lives, School Board Member Day and Weekly and McClain were kind enough to share some time in February of last year to dig in and look at the possibility of whether or not, for the first time ever, in my understanding, we could secure local funding to match the state funding for the AIG program. I would like to humbly request just that consideration from the board this evening and that we could do so in haste in the month of February, be it remotely. So, the hope would be that we could secure some funding at the local level to be included in what I anticipate you would adopt in your budget in either March or April of this year. So, I know time is of the essence. Thank you for your consideration, and I'd like to follow up, if appropriate, with those members in the near future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right, next on our list is Mr. Blair Probst.
All right, I have four other comments. The first one is coming from Deanna Hayden from Cedar Point. It states, "Good evening, everyone. My name is Deanna Hayden. I just want to say a few things. I have checked numerous county websites and all this MAST high school as county, as a county school, therefore, there should be no reason to discriminate against one county school and refuse to fund MAST. Stop hiding behind, behind there is a pending lawsuit to comment on MAST. Every high school in Carrick County has sent out, 'Apply for free college classes through dual enrollment this school year.' Hence, Travis, your complaint that MAST is offering free college on taxpayers' drama should be null and void, since according to the board's issued email, all county students can apply for free college. The main difference between MAST college enrollment and the other three high schools' college enrollment is the requirements to attend. Here is proof. My son earned straight A's in his college courses, yet is barely passing his high school class, classes. Under dual enrollment, he would not be allowed to apply or attend college classes. He is currently working in the county with his acquired trade and doing amazing." Again, that was Deanna Hayden. Second public comment is from Aaron Gordon. "There are a few things I'd like to address today. Firstly, I would like to reiterate my disappointment in the Carrick County Board of Education for not allowing a freshman class at MAST high school. This was a deliberate attempt to undermine one of the schools you took an oath to serve. You did a huge disservice to the children who applied by not allowing them to grow and learn in an environment that they would feel safe and welcome in. Programs like MAST are imperative. They serve a large group of diverse students that don't always excel in a typical high school environment. I know you've heard all the reasons before about why MAST is important, and I'm sure others are going to point out all the reasons this program is far superior to the others you like to tout as an alternative, so I'm not going to write much more on this topic. I implore you to do the thing, do the right thing, and find room in your budget to keep MAST high school open and operating at its full potential. My second concern is about the hybrid learning model currently being used at our middle and high schools. The model is a complete and utter failure as far as I'm concerned. The majority of children are seeing grades well below their potential. Ask around, kids are doing poorly, they're slipping through the cracks. The virtual students are not getting the same attention that virtual students are getting in other counties. This is little to no, there is little to no live instruction, there are no mandatory one-on-one check-ins with teachers, no one is checking on their well-being. The attendance well-being questions are an absolute waste of time. Teachers are not reading the kids' answers, more on that later. From what I hear, things aren't much better in school. Parents are expressing their concerns all over social media, but it seems no one is listening. Let me tell you about my daughter's experience last week. Last Monday, my daughter emails her math teacher to ask how to access Unit 2, to which the teacher replies, 'I handed them out in class last week.' My daughter has been virtual since last March. When she explained this, the teacher's response was for my daughter to contact guidance because she was not a virtual teacher. My daughter had been in her class for three weeks. It turns out, the school never received my daughter's form, the one we filled out digitally to remain virtually, virtual. Okay, I get it, a computer glitch, it happens, but why hasn't, why wasn't I contacted to let me know my daughter's form was never received? Why was I assumed, why was it assumed that she wanted to come back to school when I had corresponded with teachers and teachers' counselors in the past as to, as to the, as to the why we chose the virtual option? My biggest concern, though, was that she was not, she was put in a cohort, didn't show up on her given days the week prior to our discovery, but not one of her four teachers noticed that she wasn't actually there. She was marked, she was marking her own attendance from home, no one noticed she wasn't at school. You'd think with these smaller COVID classes that physical attendance-taking would be an easy task, apparently not. I did, by the way, ask all these questions to my daughter's high school principal, but I guess he was too busy pushing for a four-day hybrid model to answer me. My daughter started a completely new schedule this past week, four new teachers, two completely different subjects, three weeks into a semester, and she wasn't the only one. Schools need to be 100% virtual or 100% normal. The hybrid model is spreading teachers too thin, they are stressed and making mistakes, the guidance counselors are overwhelmed, schools are understaffed to handle both types of education. There, you are failing these kids. My last concern is how all this is affecting our children's well-being. My son decided on his own, without my knowledge, to conduct a social experiment. He has firsthand knowledge on how depression and anxiety, and anxiety were affecting his younger sister. He decided to start marking his attendance well-being questions poorly to see if anyone was actually reading the responses. He had his little sister do the same. It took an entire semester before a newly hired teacher to reach out about his response. No one has yet to respond to my daughter from her school. Now, I admit, when I was first, when I was, when I first was informed, my son, what he did, it was a little upset, I was a little upset with him. I have taught them both to be honest. Then my daughter says to me, 'Mom, some days I was being honest about my feelings, but it's okay because I have you to talk to.' What if I only had the person behind the screen to reach out to? They aren't paying attention. Please consider everything I've written today as you make decisions concerning our children. Thank you." The next one is from Jennifer Bolden in Newport. "Dear Board of Education, my name is Jennifer Bolden. My son goes to MAST. I am asking that you think about MAST as you are working on the budget. My son, as well as his friends, have had a lot of success at MAST. Several of his friends have already earned certifications and have had job offers in Carrick County. I myself am a single parent who, with two kids, who would not be able to afford to send my son to a four-year university. Thankfully, my son has had the opportunity to take several college courses and will earn his associate's degree and his high school diploma at the same time. My daughter would like to attend MAST next year. She would like to certify in the medical field, and by going to MAST, she would be able to do that and earn a high school diploma at the same time. Most of all, I would not have to take a second job to help pay for the kids, for my kids' college expenses, and they would not have to take out several loans. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Jennifer Bolden." Last public comment comes from Robin Mayer in Hockers Island. "Dear Dr. Jackson, it is now February 2nd, and the freshman applications for MAST still haven't gone out as promised. The school system has had millions of dollars in funding sources between grants, school bonds, and quite frankly, huge overhead savings that come from closing schools in March. It would be interesting to see the savings the county accrued in fuel costs alone in the past 10 months. Yet the Board of Education seems to be more interested in building gyms, tennis courts, playgrounds, and walkway, walkway overheads than actual, than actual investment in education. Our county has already paid to have two buildings remodeled to meet the needs of students at MAST. The state funding the Board of Education has been lamenting over, has released, was released in July, and that funding will more than likely continue. The board believes the CTE dual enrollment programs are comparable replacements for MAST. According to recent testimony, only three traditional high school students have been able to graduate with associate degrees in 19 years. In May of 2022, MAST students will obliterate, obliterate that record with the graduation of its first class of students. Let's look at some significant differences between two programs in terms of cost to participating families. CTE and dual enrollment students must provide their own transportation to the college. With most vocational classes meeting four days each week, this clearly puts families with lower incomes and minorities at a disadvantage. This would put a huge burden on single-income or limited-income homes and is probably limiting enrollment. Please investigate the socioeconomic status of the current participants in the CTE and dual enrollment. After looking at the demographics, less than 20 of the 270 students enrolled last year were minorities. Not only are these families responsible for daily transportation to the community college, but they are also responsible for all books, supplies, and college fees. These add up and are huge, and are a huge deterrent for enrollment. MAST is currently serving about 25% minority students, and each of those students are provided transportation and books needed for their studies. That percentage would increase if the socioeconomic status of its students were also factored in. Our county needs to continue to provide and encourage an affordable pathway for these students to access higher education while in high school. The school system has a moral and legal obligation to serve every student, especially undeserved minority and at-risk students. Spend the small amount of money needed to continue to keep this amazing school open. Look around the table, you are the new guard. The old guard will be remembered for building our school system into the dynamic education system it is. Each of you will be accountable from here on out. Do you, do you want to be responsible for dismantling what they entrusted you with and what has proven to be working here and all around the state? Your legacy is on the line, and we are all watching. Sincerely, Robin Mayer."
Thank you, Blair. We will now move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
If there are, do we add, what's that?
3.2.
Oh, 3.2, yes. Let's see.
Dr. Jackson.
Dr. Jackson.
Good evening, board members and those who've gathered with us. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to share with you an update from this afternoon. Late yesterday afternoon, we received information that the governor would have a press conference, and attending that press conference would be the state superintendent and the chairman of the State Board of Education. I was quite excited personally, when a little bit later last night, I received information that all the superintendents in the state were invited to a meeting following that press conference with our state superintendent, presumably to reflect on what we heard from the governor. Quite frankly, we thought finally the opportunity would be given to our school system, to our Board of Education, to make a decision about returning our middle school and high school students to school full-time on Plan A, just like we've been able to do on, at the elementary level, and able to do quite successfully, to the credit of our teachers, administrators, and staff members. As the governor began to speak, the comments were a bit unclear, as the governor talked about wanting to, and shared directly, wanting to encourage school systems to return students to school. He mentioned that 90 of the school systems, or the 115 school systems in the state, actually had returned students to school. As we went through the governor's press conference, we realized that all of the details would be in the document that we received that was updated, the Strong Schools North Carolina Public Health Toolkit, the document we've been using since last summer that's updated as changes are made, and that that document would give us all of the details. In the details, we found out that actually our school system is doing as much as it possibly can and has been doing as much as it possibly can. We are required to follow these details, and the board unfortunately does not have the opportunity to, at this time, bring our middle schools and high school students back to work full-time. And so, as an example of that, again, we received this document at 2:00. I'll pause before I go into the document, and I'll let you know that I met with our middle school and high school principals and assistant principals this morning, and we worked out the fullness of a Plan A for our students to return. Our staff is excited about that, that opportunity, we're looking forward to that opportunity. In fact, I had the entire presentation ready for the Board of Education this evening, thinking that was what we were going to be able to do. And after that work, we heard from the governor, and then went into the document that was shared. The document does say that Governor Cooper, Chairman Eric Davis, Superintendent Catherine Truitt, and DHHS Secretary Mandy Cohen called on schools across the state to reopen to in-person instruction to all students. It goes on to say, accordingly, for 6th through 12th grade students, they should return to in-person instruct- to in-person instruction to the fullest extent possible in, while following all protocols in the Strong Schools North Carolina Toolkit, again located on the DHHS website, including the six-foot social distancing requirements. Later, and I'm reading from page three, it says local education leaders are required to use this guidance to understand what health practices they must meet, and to develop detailed district and school plans for how to implement all required health practices described in the toolkit. Later on, on page five, there's a graphic, and I won't read it all to you, I'll just simply highlight the graphic. And essentially on this graphic, it is a graphic with, and I'll give you a copy of this, it's a graphic with lots and lots of check marks and a single red X. The single red X has to do with six-feet social distancing protocols, and it says that Plan B, currently grades six through 12, must maintain six feet of physical distance between people, especially when stationary or congregating for an increased layer of protection. The next page, it says practices that are required to be implemented by all North Carolina public school units, and says that for the middle schools and high schools on Plan B, we must ensure six-feet distance can be maintained when people are stationary, as an example when students are seated in classrooms. For some schools, this may mean limiting the total number of students, teachers, staff, and visitors within a school building at any one time to ensure the six-feet distance can be maintained. Later in the document, towards the back, it talks about transportation, and specifically again for middle schools and high schools under Plan B, says that schools are required to adhere to all requirements already outlined, and that no more than one passenger may be seated per school bus bench seat, with the exception that members of the same household may share a seat. And so, Board members, I wanted to share that update, and thank you for the opportunity, because there was and is misunderstanding about today's press conference. It seemed that we would have the opportunity for our middle schools and high schools to move to Plan A. However, this board does not have that authority at this time to be able to move our schools. We are waiting for the governor to grant that authority. There is some legislation that's being worked on in the General Assembly that might perhaps give that authority to the local Board of Education, but I appreciate the opportunity to share that update with you. And Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have about today's press conference.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, now we will move on, see if there's a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Mr. McLean has made a motion. Anybody have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Wheatley has seconded this. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. That is approved. Now we will move on to Ms. Crystal Bailey, and we will receive information about career and technical education and celebrate National CTE Month.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Crystal Bailey, Curriculum and Instructional Management Coordinator for Career and Technical Education for Carteret County Public Schools. I am here tonight on behalf of Allison Dees, CTE Director, to celebrate Career and Technical Education Month during the month of February. Our career development coordinators, along with CTE teachers, have created this video to showcase the learning that is taking place in CTE classrooms across the county in grades six through 12. Despite the challenges, our students are still participating in real-world activities and hands-on experiences. Some of the activities our students continue to participate in include career exploration opportunities, work-based learning such as job shadowing and internships, and career and technical student organizations, including FFA, FBLA, DECA, and Skills USA. The CTSO activities include community service competition projects, regional, state, and national competitions. These opportunities have helped to develop and strengthen their communication skills, employability skills, and networking opportunities. Thank you for your continued support of our CTE program. CTE hopes that you enjoyed your meal tonight, which was prepared by our culinary teachers and students from all three high schools. These teachers are Robin Stafford, Croatan High School, Karen Mills, East Carteret High School, and Jessica Lewis, West Carteret High School. Our goal is to continue to provide the resources and opportunities that will empower all students to be successful citizens, workers, and leaders in a global economy. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we enjoyed our meal. It was fantastic.
Delicious.
I will definitely let them know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have got Blair Probst with a policy, second reading for a policy revision.
Good evening, again, Board. Second read policies. These policies come from the Fall 2019, Spring 2020, Fall 2020 update packets from the School Board Association. Policies reflect changes in the state board policy and federal and state legislation. Since the last read, Mr. Whitford made some additional edits to three of our policies. Policy 3620, which is extracurricular activities and student organizations, a good portion of his edits included information about the athletic code that you had already previously approved. And Policy 5020, Visitors to Schools, the School Board Association proposed a temporary language restricting nonessential personnel in building, in buildings during the pandemic. Mr. Whitford revised that language to delegate that authority to the superintendent if there is an emergency where the health and safety of students or staff are threatened, so it wouldn't be a temporary restriction. And then 6325, Student Parking, that provides additional language about school officials' ability to patrol and inspect vehicles in the school parking lots. The remainder of the policies were not edited. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody having questions for Mr. Probst? All right, we need to, does anybody want to make a motion on this second reading?
I will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wheatley has made the motion. Anybody second this?
I'll second it.
Ms. Taylor has seconded it. All in favor, raise your right hand. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Probst, you're up again.
Regarding first-read policies, these policies for first-read come from the North Carolina School Board Association's Fall 2020 Update Packet. These policies merely reflect minor edits to the text and technical language, such as legal references and cross-references or footnotes. There is nothing of substantial nature to report about. These policies is merely editorial. I will, however, also note that there was a regulation that was submitted to you for informational purposes. That regulation is 22-unit diploma requirements, and it was issued by Dr. Jackson on January 8th, 2021. And that's all I have.
Perfect. Thank you, Blair.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Probst. All right, we are moving on to item 6.1, and we're going to consider the budget revisions with Ms. Carswell. Good evening.
I'd like to present Budget Revision Number Six. I'll start with the state fund line items. The first item there is an additional 0.06 position of classroom teacher that we received. The second item is a reduction of our EC classroom teacher salaries due to a headcount transfer. The third item is appropriate funds that we receive for EC teachers, so they take away in one hand and they give back in another, of $29,101 for students in group homes. The fourth area is appropriate funds for a state special reserve for a contract nurse. We received those, that grant, and it will pay for the contract nurse, and also not a part of the grant, but additional funds we received for developmental day for pre-K teacher salary. The next item is, towards the end of the calendar year, the General Assembly voted on flexibility of the COVID funds. So that allowed us to spend the money where we actually needed it instead of in the individual pots where it was restricted. What we did, this is the transfers to reflect how we did spend that money. We had previously, using ESAR funding, purchased some computer devices. So we moved those expenditures from ESARs into the COVID money and spent the money before the end of the year, which at that time was going to be the requirement. That freed up funds in the ESAR funding, which is more flexible. The next line item is a reduction of principal bonus. The state allotted these funds, and then we had employees who weren't qualified for it, and so this is where they're taking back the funds that we did not use. And by not being qualified, it was an employee who had transferred out of the system. And the last item in the state is appropriating funds for internet connectivity. So that is the state budget revision. The federal fund is allotting $20,810 and for the special needs target assisted program. And we just received those funds this year, so we're just now updating this. And the last part is the capital budget revision, and we're appropriating the carryover funds from the capital from last year. We had previously already adopted a budget amendment that adopted for the special projects. This is the other funds that are not in a special project that we did not spend last year, and we're appropriating, asking to carry that over this year, in an amount of $82,585.63. And that's the total budget amendment of $348,735.
Perfect. Anybody have approval? Yes. Anybody having questions for Ms. Carswell? All right, I think we're good. Thank you so much. We need to make a motion to approve, consider the budget revision number six.
Make the motion.
Ms. Taylor has made a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Mr. Day has seconded it. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes unanimously. Very good. Thank y'all so much. We will now move on to 7.1, Received Facility Support Operations Update with Mr. Richie Payler.
Good evening. Our capital budget projects are officially finished, so we just installed the HVAC system at Wyatt Elementary Cafeteria, and that's up and running. So that was the last project we had on the list for this year, so there will be a number of capital projects this year. I will give you an update on the bond projects. Ms. Carswell, Mr. Moretti, myself have met and developed a list of the first projects that will go out, and we, then Ms. Carswell and myself met with a representative from the county and went over that initial list. As you know, it takes a while to sell the bonds and actually get your hands on the money, but the county has graciously offered to kind of front us the money to get started on some of these projects immediately, so we're working on getting that done. One of the first things that we've done is we've created an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications, to try to secure an architect that will design the major projects that we have. So at this time, there are advertisements in the paper that's announced the RFQ for us requesting people to apply for that. They have until February 19th to apply, and those requests will go to Keith Moretti. At that time, we will review those packets, and at some point in the future, Dr. Jackson will get with you, the Board of Education, for those people that are applying to be our architect, to make presentations to use, to where you will select the architect with the help of Mr. Moretti. So that, like I said, those are due on the 19th, so it'll be sometime after that that we can get the packets together for you. Any questions on bond projects?
Thank you, Mr. Payler. All right, next up is our esteemed Dr. Jackson.
Thank you, sir, and good evening again, Board members. Welcome to February. During the month of February, we have the opportunity to celebrate great things happening in our school system. The month of February is Black History Month, or African-American History Month. It was first expanded from a week-long celebration to a month in 1976, the nation's bicentennial. President Gerald Ford urged Americans to, quote, "seize the opportunity to honor the too often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history." The month of February is also Career and Technical Education, or CTE Month, as you heard earlier, and it's National Children Dental, Dental Health Month. During the month, we'll have the opportunity to celebrate National Future Farmers of America, or FFA Week, National Family Career and Community Leaders of America, FCCLA Week. These are two, of course, of our CTE organizations. Next week's a big week, as we will celebrate National Love the Bus Week and National School Counseling Week. We greatly depend on and appreciate the men and women who serve our children as bus drivers and counselors, and look forward to celebrating their service next week. The last week of the month is National Public Schools Week. There's no question in our mind, that, in my mind, that our public schools are the bedrock our great nation is built upon. Never before have we seen just how important our schools are than we have during this pandemic. Today, we learn the North Carolina Eastern All District Band Winners, as they were announced. We are pleased to announce that Carteret County Public Schools, at 86 had 86 winners, more than any other school system in the Eastern District, which is all schools east of Interstate 95. We had winners from each of Iowa Middle and High Schools. We had approximately one-half of all of the all-district middle school band members coming from Carteret County Public Schools. We had approximately one-fourth of all of the all-district high school bands consisting of students from Carteret County Public Schools. Mr. Everett and Ms. Nance will be working on a press release in the coming days to share this incredible accomplishment. Due to COVID-19 restrictions, students could not audition in person this year. Instead, band directors were required to video all the students who are auditioning for a statewide panel of judges. We appreciated the work of our band directors and band students to ensure that Carteret County Public Schools continues to lead the way in regional and state rankings. A list of the individual all-district band winners can be found in your board materials. I'd also like to congratulate the Croatan Boys Cross Country Team, who placed third in the 2A state championship. The Croatan Girls Cross Country Team placed fifth in the 2A state championship. The West Carteret Boys Cross Country Team and the West Carteret Girls Cross Country Team each placed 12th in the state at the 3A level. East Carteret High School also had a runner qualify and compete in the 1A cross-country competition. Meanwhile, all three high school volleyball teams qualified for the state playoffs to cap off amazing seasons where each earned an outright or shared conference championship. Board members, I'm incredibly appreciative of the work of our teachers, administrators, and staff who are continuing to give their all amidst unprecedented challenges on behalf of our children. They are absolutely amazing. I can assure you that we have been, we are, and we will remain, Carteret Strong. Mr. Chair, this concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. I appreciate that, and we appreciate you. We're now going to move into comments from board members, and we're going to open with Brittany Whately.
I'd like to read a statement as recommended by the Curriculum Advisory Committee on behalf of the Carteret County Board of Education. It's the goal of the Carteret County Board of Education that every student be provided the opportunity to receive a sound, basic education and graduate from high school prepared for work, further education, and citizenship. As stated in Carteret County Board of Education Policy 3000, the Board believes that among the objectives, administrators of the educational program must strive to provide each student the opportunities to develop sufficient knowledge of geography, history, and basic economic and political systems to make informed choices with regard to issues that affect the students personally or affect the student's community, state, and nation. Develop the capacity to examine and solve problems, foster respect and appreciation for cultural and ideological diversity and differences, and develop the ability to be productive in a team environment, learn and acquire the skills necessary for a lifetime of continuous learning and adaptation to change in the workplace and society. We believe it is the responsibility of educators to provide students a comprehensive knowledge of geography, history, and basic economic and political systems to create critical thinkers that can acquire and evaluate this information to form opinions they can defend. We support draft three of the revisions to the social studies standards and that they were directly informed by over 7,000 stakeholders, including professional educators. When narrowing the focus of the content knowledge within the standards, we limit the student's opportunity to analyze and evaluate to develop a deeper understanding of the content. We encourage the North Carolina State Board of Education and North Carolina Department of Public Instruction to further look at the standards and review the content knowledge required to provide a sound, basic education for students to form opinions on local, regional, state, national, and global systems. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Whately. Before we move on with board comments, I'm going to switch this up a little bit tonight. I don't know if I'm allowed to do this, but in my business, the last 10% of everything is what people remember. So I'm going to ask Bubba, he's got a comment, but I'm going to ask him to go last tonight because I think his comment, it might be the most important comment. So I'm going to open it up to any other board members who may have comments at this point.
I just want to say thank you again to the CTE staff and students. The dinner was amazing, and I think we all agreed it was the best soup we had ever had. And thank you to the people that came and publicly commented. You can tell that a lot of time was spent on these materials, and I really do appreciate the time you spent in presenting those. And then lastly, thank you to Dr. Jackson and the principals and assistant principals for the quick work you did this morning in hopes that we were going to be able to move to Plan A. It was a lot of work that happened very quickly. So we're very thankful for that.
There has been a lot of work behind the scenes. A lot of very in-depth work. I think we were all pretty disappointed to hear the announcement this afternoon, but hopefully, we have some really great people working in the General Assembly trying to move us along, and hopefully, before long, we can all get back in school.
Jackson, anybody else?
I want to say how disappointed I was this afternoon with the news. I don't know how, we've shown that we can safely bring back K through five, and how can someone decide which children deserve an education more than others with this game of middle schoolers? Y'all stay home. It just blows my mind that people can feel that way. The governor mentioned twice, local control. And if, you know, if that's what he wants to do, then put it in local control. We can show you safely that we can do it. But then he comes up with a toolkit that pretty much doesn't change anything for the middle schoolers and high schoolers. So it's very disappointing what happened this afternoon. And I want to thank the CTE folks. We have a fabulous program in this county, and I know firsthand through my own children. So keep up all the good work.
Thank you, Ms. Chawwitt. Anybody else? All right, I'm going to speak, and then I'm going to let Bubba speak.
Pressure.
Yeah, you're going to be very, a lot of pressure. I agree with the rest of the board. I have poured my heart and soul since the beginning of December into reaching out to politicians, to the State Board of Education, to governors, advisors, to health departments locally, statewide. Having two kids in our public school system, I see every day, every day, an eighth grader and a sophomore. And those are the children who are affected. And it is not only affecting them, it affects my wife, it affects me, it affects my friends. It is a cycle that is affecting everybody. And while you feel like people are listening, nobody really does anything about it. At what point do we need to stand up and do something? At what point does someone let us do something? You know, we can't keep doing what we're doing. These kids are suffering. These kids are suffering. I see it every day with my own kids. And I just want y'all to keep these children in mind. They don't come to these meetings and speak. They don't sit up here on this board and speak. They do the best they can. They don't have a voice. Well, I'm their voice. We all need to be their voice. I'm going to move on to something a little bit more joyful. Well, this is not joyful. This is not joyful, but as you now know, Tabby Nance, our communications director, will be retiring March 1st. If you didn't see the article about her in the January 24th News Times newspaper, please read it. She has been quite the champion for our school system. We will be celebrating her 30 years of service on Monday, February 15th, at 3:30 PM with a drive-by parade. The public is welcome to participate in the parade. Because of social distancing guidelines, this seems an unusual way to celebrate, but it is becoming more popular. I still don't like it that it's not in here, but it's still becoming more popular. The parade will happen around this building. Participants can join the parade from Lenoxville Road by turning left onto our drive, Safrit Drive. Stop briefly at Tabby's tent at the flagpole area to give her your congratulations, cards, or mementos. Then proceed left around our building to exit. We can't give Tabby enough praise or thanks for all of her work in the system. And I'm going to save my love for Tabby for when we're able to do this. Bubba will not be here, and Bubba's known Tabby the longest out of our board members, so I'm going to pass this on to Bubba. Mr. McLean.
Well, thank you. First of all, I want to reiterate what everybody else has said, the importance of getting our students back in the classroom. And Dr. Jackson, if I can, I'd like to put you on the spot because a big piece of that is making sure that our staff, people safe coming back and possibly being vaccinated, if that's their choice. And the board, the county commissioners, the health department has all been working together. But can you just quickly update us on where our staff would be getting vaccinated?
Thank you. Be happy to. I would like to thank publicly our Board of Education and members of the Board of County Commissioners who all have been advocating for our teachers to receive those vaccines just as quickly as possible. In working with the county, the issue is not Carteret County at all. The mass vaccination clinics have, by all accounts, been absolutely amazing, extremely well organized and well-run. And the county commissioners were very grateful and graceful in thanking the various county entities who helped put that together and make that happen, including the school system, and we appreciate that. In working with the county, the projection for our teachers to be able to receive the vaccine, best case is mid-April. It may be closer to early May. The issue is the availability of the vaccine to Carteret County. And so again, I do appreciate members of the Board of Education and the county commissioners who are doing their best to advocate for our teachers to be vaccinated just as soon as possible. We're certainly also doing that work. But the holdup at this moment is at the state and federal level in receiving the vaccine to our county. But we have been working, Mr. Probst and I have had meetings with the health director and with the emergency management director to make sure that our school system is prepared for when teachers are able to have the vaccine with a process that will flow very smoothly. And we will be sending out a survey to our staff members so they can indicate if they would like to receive the vaccine. It will certainly be optional to them. Thank you for the question, and again, board members, thank you for your support. And I do want to thank our county commissioners for their support in trying to get our teachers vaccinated as quickly as possible.
Thank you for letting me put you on the spot, but that is a component or an obstacle that we're trying to knock down when we are able to go back. So everybody knows how much Tabby enjoys attention. And I had originally started writing some stuff out, and it just didn't, you know, feel appropriate. But Tabby has been with the school system almost as long as I've been alive. I think I was kindergarten or something. But you have and have always been the epitome of how great our school system is, in my mind. Hardworking, loyal, you have so many contacts around the county. I look up to, I think everybody in this building looks up to you and around the county. We always say nobody's irreplaceable, but it will certainly be difficult to fill your shoes. And I've grown to care about you, just like everybody that you've worked with and connected with throughout this county. And I wish we could have a different celebration, but I think you'll see quite a few people come out on the 15th. And the only reason I'm speaking tonight is because I won't be here. And anyway, I just wanted to say thank you for every single ounce of time that you've spent with the school system and continuing to do what's best for this county. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. We love you, Tabby. I just want to remind everybody that the next meeting is March 2nd, 2021, and I hope to see everybody in this room here. Very excited about it. And does anybody want to make a motion to adjourn tonight?
For me.
Second.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Bam. Thank you.
We know how to adjourn.